Good evening. I'd like to call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. And let's see, Andy is out and Ryan is out. So this evening we have Carrie Belkey as an alternate, Chuck Sheehan, myself Ben Filbrick, Fred Beitman, Lynn Conway, and sitting in, seated for an alternate will be Marge Salinger. And the first item will be the minutes of March, no, well, March 27th, 1721 is our regulation rewrite that we're working on the minutes, correct Fred?
Yes, we are, we are working on that.
Thank you.
We've got, I just have to try it again.
Right, okay. So is there a motion on our number 1722 from April 4th meeting?
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Chuck, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, errors, omissions? Thank you Fred, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's okay. Sam, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, and a quick reminder from our audio technician is to please turn on your microphone when you speak and turn it off when you're done speaking. Thank you.
So I'll jump right forward to administrative review. First item today, Lockwood Cove Marina is application 23048ZON. Lockwood Cove Side Marina. This is a zoning permit application to demolition and reconstruct a building, a hotel building at 830 Stonington Road, assessors map 57, block 2, lot 11, in the MC80 zone. The commission discussed this at their meeting two weeks ago. There were two things that we were asked to get which was reviewed by the town engineer, which we're still awaiting and confirmation of resolution of any existing violations by the ZEO. And the ZEO did send a memo that's included in your packet, I'm happy to go over it in a sec. So it's a memo dated April 18th from Candace Palmer. A permanent injunction has been issued to cease and desist the occupancy of the gray waterfront structure, unit number 20, to bring the property into compliance with building and zoning codes. Judgment lien of $83,300 has been filed against the property. There's currently zoning approval to remove fixtures and furnishings from the building prior to being demolished. And she noted the owner's in violation for unit 20, the gray waterfront building, until it either comes down or requires permits to make the structure flood compliant. I was able to speak with the architect today about this and he was expecting to be here but he wound up feeling pretty ill this afternoon. And we talked about unit 20. This seemed important to the commission as a kind of outstanding zoning violation. And it's in violation of the floodplain ordinance in that it was significantly improved so now it needs to meet the standards of the floodplain regulations. And he's working with an engineer now to determine whether they're going to raise the first floor or whether they're just going to tear the structure down. And he said, right now, the first floor, they've removed non-load bearing walls, furnishings, fixtures, in preparation for complying with the floodplain ordinance. There's actually, there's also a question at the meeting two weeks ago about the elevation of the building. There was a site sketch submitted by the applicant that showed the building at about the 22-foot contour and what datum those contours were using. So that was actually, I looked a little bit closer, that was derived from the town's GIS viewer. So the datum is NAD 88, which would, I believe is the same datum that's used for FEMA flood maps. The floodplain elevation in that area, it's AE 10 and the VE zone is at elevation 13, I believe. So seeing that there's no one here, you know, if the commission has any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. I did, like I said, speak to the architect on a couple occasions, including today, so.
Any more questions for Sam or discussion?
Well, it sounds like we're still not in compliance on that property, so I'm not sure we want to take any action on the latest request would be my...
I would agree, yeah.
I agree.
So do we leave this open or do we motion, we deny this application as presented, do we get a clean slate?
Well, I suppose you could leave it open and see if they've complied with that unit 20 by the time of the next meeting. And perhaps, you know, them knowing that you're tabling action until then motivates them.
There's no time limit on this unlike a application that requires a public hearing, right?
I don't actually know what the time limit would be, I would assume 65 days. But this is a zoning permit, it isn't a site plan. So the statutes don't actually really speak to zoning permits, it's usually something that's handled by staff. Except in some cases where that ability isn't delegated to staff like here. But I would think to be safe, you'd want to try to handle this within 65 days. Meaning either an approval or denial.
Can you hear a motion?
I'm not quite sure how to put it. I guess a motion would be to deny the application.
Lockwood Cove Side Marina. Do we, thank you Fred, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So moved.
So moving on, this was a late addition to the administrative report for application ZON 23087 for Washington Street by Mystic Waterfront Group LLC, or I'm sorry, for Waterford, Washington Street in Mystic by Waterfront Group LLC. This is another zoning permit application. It's a minor modification to an approved site plan. The address is for Washington Street, but in fact, what's going on here is shifting of a driveway that's on Willow Street. So if you're heading into the marina just past the dermatologist's office, which would be on your left, there's a curb cut off Willow Street. And what's being proposed here is for Waterfront Group LLC, the owners, to actually be doing a road repair on Willow Street and then kind of simultaneously shifting their driveway apron to the south. So they have a 60-foot entrance and they would be adding a new 60-foot concrete apron south of that entrance. This has been reviewed by Mystic Fire Department who, they're accepting of this, they don't see an issue with it.
Will the new curb cut now be 120 feet long or they remove the old one, the old curtain?
I understand they'll be removing and not using the previous one.
Okay. Fred, you have a question?
No, no comments.
Okay.
Is there any reason to turn it down?
The only thing I'm thinking of is, is this for two-way traffic, do we know that? And it's servicing, it's not servicing Red 36, it's servicing the future activity at the former boatyard?
Yeah, that seems to be the case and I think it's definitely enough space, 60 feet for two-way traffic.
Yeah, that's the driveway we use to get to 36. So it would just shift south a few feet, several feet.
I think there's several ways to get there. I think there's several ways to get there.
Well, oh yeah, sure. There are much, but that's the main road.
I'm just wondering, because I'm not familiar with the connection between R-36 and this group. Was any of the approval associated with R-36 based on anything, any part of this property? I mean, because R-36, as Fred has said, this is their, how people get into R-36, so I don't know. Was that the driveway that during the application approval of R-36, that this is what was said to be used and there's some kind of a tie to that property and that approval that we need to understand?
The old driveway was where it was because of a storage building to the south of it. I understand, I haven't been there in several months, but I understand that storage building is gone. And it's just an open lot at this point.
Right.
So, but that's how people generally get to R-36.
Right.
There are other ways to do it.
So I guess my point is, just in general, and I don't know the answer to this, but I know that's the entrance, as you said Fred, that's the entrance way into R-36. So we're looking at this and if the approval of R-36 was somehow connected, if there were any kind of, you know, restraints, you know, exceptions, anything at all during that approval process for R-36, that were related to this, we should understand them, we should have a list of what they were and see whether there's any kind of, you know, a give and take here. Fred, you might be right, it might be a kind of a no-brainer, but I do think that these things might have all been connected. Maybe somebody else knows if they were around, maybe the applicant knows, I don't, I don't know.
We do have to correspond to that, you know, the plot, right?
Yes, let's, Harry...
It's the intention, like, think exactly what your plot is.
Mr. Boardson, would you like to come out and, maybe you can shed light on this dilemma?
Yeah, happy to. Good evening, everybody. Harry Boardson, representative here in the Waterfront Group, and the president of the application for the 36, so it's not that complicated. What, there's a soft patch in the road that we repaired. There's a soft patch in the road that we repaired last week and the idea of shifting the entrance to the south, we're simply making the left side of the current driveway and entrance the new right side because we'd like to get the traffic off of this soft patch that keeps eroding because of the people that enter and exit both the marina and Red 36. So we're trying to formalize it, make it a little bit neater now that there's a warehouse that's, that we removed. So we're working with our neighbor at the Allen Spool Mill just to formalize some drivelanes. So we've kind of moved ours a little bit to the south, taken care of the roadway that keeps getting damaged, so we've repaired that and we're hoping that this will solve part of the problem. So it's a 60-foot entrance now, we want to move it over and it'll be a 60-foot entrance, you know, tomorrow if you approve it. And it'll just help us maintain the road a little bit better and it kind of formalized things and make things a little bit neater. That's it. It's not related to, I mean, it's always been the entrance or the exit of the marina facility for all uses.
Answer your questions Lynn?
I think so. You know, again, I do think they're connected, right, though, R-36 and the application approval process for R-36 with this overall property.
Yeah, it's our, it's our building.
So I do think, you know, just in general, when you're, when other things may come forward about this property, we have to understand, because there were some stipulations put on the approval for R-36 and we need to understand what those were, right, and how any change...
Yeah, it was two, it was two public parking, it was two public parking spaces and a public access on the north side of the property.
Right.
There's nothing, there's no relation to the entrance or exit to and from the property.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Got it.
Do I hear a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve the application?
Thank you Fred, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Chuck, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under old business, PZ 2303 CAM, Richard Coop and Charlie Andrews. This CAM application is, we just today received a request by the applicant that this be extended. So we're running up on the 65-day decision deadline. So I think the thing to do would be to just extend it another 14 days to your next meeting. So they requested that extension because deep comments came in yesterday and they want additional time to address those. And there was also a staff comment about the closeness of the RC 120 zone cuts through a portion of their property and it actually impacts a patio that they have planned. So because of the non-infringement area associated with the RC 120, they would have to move that patio. And if they address that, it seems like they would also be addressing deep's comments, which is, you know, just noting the close, the proximity of improvements to title wellens and then the necessity of having to put E and S controls right up at the edge of the title wellens.
Right. You think 14 days is enough with the slow-motion engineers and...
Why, if you give me a second, I can locate their extension request.
I thought it said 30 days on the cover letter.
Yeah, I think that would be more appropriate.
I do too. Okay. Do I hear a motion for 30 days?
So that would give them to our second meeting in May. 30 days would give them enough time.
One of the two meetings in May, whichever they can...
Yeah, okay. I would, I would continue it.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, yeah, very sloppily.
Second.
Thank you Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Onwards to the public hearing, continuation?
Do you want me to read this?
Right Sam.
Pursuant to general statutes of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. on the following application. PZ 23, I'm sorry, PZ 2235SD and CAM, Old Stone Ridge LLC, residential re-subdivision and coastal area management review applications for the creation of two lots, property located at 111-113 Montauk Avenue, Stonington. Assessors map 131, block 3, lot 6, zone RR80 and RC 120. This has been continued from our April 4th meeting.
Thank you Lynn. So as a reminder of the process, there should be a sign-up sheet by the door and we'll hear from the applicant what other additional information they can provide us. We'll have public input and rebuttal if necessary by the applicant, staff questions, board questions, staff input, and hopefully we can close and get to a decision this evening. Good evening Attorney Latwick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting and the discussion regarding the dedication of open space as opposed to the fee in lieu, we are proposing a conservation easement over a far acre parcel that abuts the Avalonia parcel. I have submitted a copy of the conservation easement dated 16 October 2018 that the town of Stonington accepted in 2018 as the format for the conservation easement. There was also submitted, not by me but by Candace Palmer, her opinion that this Planning and Zoning Commission has the final determination as to whether or not dedicated open space or the fee in lieu of open space, you know, would be most appropriate in this application. I would recommend that memorandum to you. She seemed very clear that the, that the dedicated, the conservation easement and the fee in lieu of open space would be most beneficial to the town. Just this evening, I received about two hours ago, the qualifications of Gregory B. Herb, a certified appraiser in the state of Connecticut, familiar with property values in the town of Stonington, which I gave to Mr. Alexander earlier this evening. In the event that you determine that the fee in lieu is most appropriate, I would recommend that Gregory B. Herb be the appraiser who would determine the value of the land prior to the subdivision for the 10% fee of, fee in lieu of open space. And I think that touches on the points that I wanted to make following up the discussion that was had here, now at our last meeting. I got the sense that the commission was leaning in favor of the fee in lieu and those, the memorandum from Candace Palmer, the draft of the conservation easement that the town accepted within the last five years seemed to me to be, obviously we need to include the description, not of the land that was included in 2018, but what we're proposing to do now in that, in that format of the, of the conservation easement. But that's the point that was being made, that if that is your determination, that's the, that's the format of the conservation easement that I recommend and that the town has approved in the, in the recent past.
And we would put that right on the site plan? That little block you have outlined?
The easement itself...
Yeah, but you have prohibitions and rights, we could put that right on the site plan?
I think it's a declaration that's filed on the land records perpetually.
Okay, filed on the land records.
It would be shown on the site plan and it would also be a caveat that would be on the land perpetually.
Okay.
This is the, this is submitted, was submitted last week, showing the area adjacent to Avalonia, which is proposed. This is the conservation easement which I submitted last Friday, the format. And it would be, this property would be described in this easement. This easement would be recorded on the land records. It's not just the, you know, the site plan, but this document, this conservation easement is actually signed by the, by the owners and by the town. Signed by the landowner, approved by the, you know, by the town and then filed for record on the land records, you know, in the town clerk's office. You also have a notation on the, you know, on the site plan that no further subdivision of the rear lot can, you know, can be made. There's no, you know, there's no promises here that are not backed up by filing, you know, in the land records of the town of Stonington.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Just one, if you'd refresh my memory, what's the primary distinction between a conservation easement and an open space in terms of, in terms of use of the property by the public, that sort of thing?
The conservation easement restricts the landowner's use of the property, you know, in very restrictive ways. Can't be developed, can't be improved, got to be kept in its natural state. They can remove dead trees, dangerous trees, but they can't clearcut it, they can't use it for, you know, for recreation or horseback riding or things of that nature. So it remains in its, in its natural state, that's the point of the conservation easement. But the, but the landowner retains the ownership of the property. It's not open to the public.
It's not?
No, it's not. In my, you know, my earlier remarks at our last meeting was that this, the property which is subject to the subdivision application abuts 27 acres of Avalonia property. It's not that the, that the public does not have access to this area and furthermore, they have access to the, the upper reaches of the Quambog Cove, which this property, this five acres that they were requesting, does not add, you know, significantly to the public's enjoyment of the cove or the 27 acres that Avalonia already owns.
Okay, thank you.
If you recall, I mentioned the kind of odd situation that if the five acres were taken from the 32 acres that the landowner owns now, they would have less land than the Avalonia. Avalonia would have 27 acres and then 32 acres if they got the five. It just seemed like an odd switch to me. And furthermore, the, the town having conserved this property so that it's not further developed also gets the fee in lieu of open space. And as Candace Palmer's memo, you know, lays out for you, which I hope you've looked at, shows that the fund for open space has been used in the recent past, most recently to participate in the acquisition, acquisition of the open space on Al Harvey Road. And that this fee in lieu of open space would help to reconstitute that fund for the purchase of future properties for open space, you know, down the road. It's kind of a win-win situation for the town. You get the five acres conserved, you get the fee in lieu of open space on top of that. I call that a win-win for the town.
Any other questions for the attorney?
I think the attorney did exactly what we asked him to do.
Great.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I agree that the memo from the zoning enforcement officer says exactly that, that replenishment of the fund is more important than the, this open space to the town at this point. And she strongly recommends that we get a fee in lieu of open space on this, on this project.
Has everybody had a chance to look at Candy Palmer's?
Fagan?
Happy you had a chance to look at Candy's?
Oh yeah.
I would just make two comments for your, for your, if you were inclined to approve this, two comments that the format of the conservation easement will be approved by town staff. And secondly, the certification of Mr. Herb, which he sent me about two hours ago, it's on the back page, his state certification expires on April 30th of this year. As a technicality, if you wanted to include, you know, the stipulation that that certification be renewed at the, you know, at the end of April... be renewed at the, you know, at the end of April, I don't want, I don't want to surprise anybody when you look at that down the road saying, whoops, that's going to expire in less than a month. He assures me that it will be renewed. Greg Herb has been in business in southeastern Connecticut for 27 years. I've known him, I've used him in the past. I've indicated the representative client of Mr. Herb is the Chelsea Groton Bank. He appraised my house the last time I got a mortgage. He's a well-known and well-respected appraiser. I would, I would recommend him to appraise the property for the value of the land prior to subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Question, Lynn?
I have a couple of questions, and I'm sorry because I wasn't here last meeting, but I'm looking at the, at the staff report. It says that the current review of the Conservation Commission on March 6 indicated they recommended against...
I can't quite hear you, but if we did talk with the Conservation Commission last meeting...
Sorry. I'm looking at this and it says, on March 6, the Conservation Commission recommended against a proposal by the applicant for a fee in lieu of open space.
Correct. We hashed that out quite a bit last meeting, and that's what Candy Palmer's whole memo was concerning.
Right. So I saw that, that's Candy's opinion. Did anyone go back to the Conservation Commission with this new information and ask them what their thoughts are now?
The chairman of the Conservation Commission was here at the last meeting of this commission on the 4th of this month and made their presentation to the commission at that time.
He was standing on an improper leg of saying, what was it? He, he thought we needed to provide the same thing as ZBA hardship, and that was not true.
Right. So I totally understand that we can do this, and that was made very clear. My question is that the, that the Conservation Commission has recommended against this. They want the land.
That's correct. What, what, what the chairman stated, however, when he was here, standing at this microphone, you know, at the last meeting, was that they only do, they only accept the fee in lieu of open space if there's a hardship. There is no such hardship requirement in the law. None. It does not exist. They made it up.
No, I, I'm all, I'm all aligned with that. I totally agree with that argument. I'm, I'm just, was that the only reason they didn't want it? They, they didn't want the fee in lieu? Because that's not what this says. This indicates that the Conservation...
They want the land.
They want the land.
Right.
And I understand that they were wrong on their premise, that we, you know, you didn't meet the qualifications, right? I totally understand that, and I agree with you. I'm just saying that the Conservation Committee wants the land. Yes, Candy has indicated she thinks, no, I'd be better to get the money, right? Did anyone go back to the Conservation Committee and say, hey?
I had no idea. But my understanding last meeting was Chuck, I thought brilliantly suggested the conservation easement, and my understanding at the time was that the Conservation Commission was nodding their head that that would fly. Now, maybe I misinterpreted them, but that was my understanding.
It was my understanding, although I can't say for a fact that he actually said that on the record.
I can't see it.
But we, I think what Lynn's saying is that if we're going to not take the Conservation Commission's recommendation, should there be additional dialogue with them?
Yeah. I think to close the loop, I think it's highly unusual for us not to take their recommendations. And again, I totally understand that they were incorrect in, you know, listing the, you know, the various things that need to be, yeah. So I just think that we should definitely have a continued dialogue and...
My argument was that sometimes more is not simply better than not more. If there were no access for the public to this, to this area adjacent to Quambog Cove, and this was, this five acres was going to give the public access to Quambog Cove, my argument fails. But simply to add five acres to 27 acres that they already have access to, in my opinion, adds nothing of significance. If the five acres was on the Cove and they didn't have that access, that, that argument would fail. But five acres added to 27 acres for a total of 32 acres, to me, adds nothing to what exists presently and currently.
I understand. I just think that it would be appropriate to go back to the Conservation Commission.
I think it'd be a waste of time.
They've had two weeks, and they, we talked about the conservation easement at our last meeting.
They could have been here tonight too.
Excuse me?
They could have been here tonight as well.
Is there someone from the Conservation Commission here?
Yeah, I, you know, we asked for qualification from the town, we got it, saying it's our decision. To me, that's what we asked for, we received it.
Correct. Excuse me?
Are you asking the public comment?
No, I was asking if anybody was here from the Conservation Commission. I'm trying to get to the public comment time period.
Well, so that's one, one question I have, and the other, is it, is it standard that the applicant would suggest who the assessor is and the town doesn't have an assessor that goes about doing this?
Mr. Alexander asked me for that recommendation today.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions with Attorney Ladwig? Now I'd like to go to the public comments. Is there anybody who's signed up on the sign up sheet? Well, this is from last week. Is there a new one for this week? No one else has signed up for today?
I am sorry.
Would you like to speak, Ben? Please have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, since we don't have a permanent town plan or the public is kind of at a disadvantage, we did not get a staff report or have access to a staff report. So we have not seen Candy Palmer's comments or memorandum, and if it isn't too long, I would hope that maybe you'd enter it into the record so that we can all get at least the flavor of it. Secondly, I'd like to ask what precedent there is for seeking, or for seeking or following the opinion of the zoning enforcement officer when it comes to acceptance of open space or fee in lieu of. I don't, I can't remember any precedent for that. For the, the zoning enforcement officer does a lot of things, and she does them very well, but I've, I've never heard her opining on, on an issue like that. Unless she's acting as the current director of planning, I don't know.
When the attorney, when the chairman of Conservation Commission stated what the exception was for not getting a conservation, he said something a lot harsher in regulations. And we wanted an interpretation to whether, whether that hardship existed. And the zoning enforcement officer went on in greater depth about, oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I don't think you have any problem hearing me though, right, Ben? My, my voice does have a tendency to carry a little. So that's, that's how that opinion was originally sought. She did take it a little further this time. I do think it was helpful that, that she talked about the status of the fund, and, and it was helpful in this case, I think.
Thank you. The other, the other point I would make is I don't know how many of you have walked the site. I know inland wetlands commission regularly walks, does site walks on applications that they get. It isn't necessarily applicable to your applications. I think Conservation Commission probably does. I walked the site this week, and not the site in question, but the Avalonia public trails. And I think that Ms., that Attorney Ladwig's comments that adding five acres to 27 acres has somehow less value because the 27 acres already exists and, and the public access is there, I think it's really just the opposite. I think that since the access and the, and the 27 acres are there, it's a perfect opportunity to add that five acres of open space to it, as opposed to somewhere where there's just five acres sitting out in the middle of nowhere that we have no access to or would be meaningless by itself. This would be, this would be combined to a much more meaningful parcel. And I hope that some of you have walked the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Oh, you have a copy? Would you like a copy of?
Oh, yes.
I didn't know you had a loose copy.
Is it charted up to read?
We have it in our staff report.
Go down on it, but you can read it after the round.
Excuse me, Carly?
The public has not heard or seen it.
Who would like to read this into the record?
I'll just give away my copy, so.
Ben, would you like to? Go ahead.
Sure, I'll read that.
The Conservation Commission is advisory only per the following. Note that some activities may and others shall. Connecticut General Statute, section 7-131A, Conservation Commissions. One, a Conservation Commission shall conduct research into the utilization and possible utilization of land areas of the municipality and may coordinate the activities of unofficial bodies organized for similar purposes and may advertise, prepare, and distribute books, maps, charts, plans, and pamphlets as necessary for its purposes. Two, it may propose a greenways plan for inclusions in the plan of conservation and development of the municipality prepared pursuant to section 8-23. Three, it may inventory natural resources and formulate watershed management and drought management plans. Such plans shall be consistent with water supply and management plans prepared pursuant to section 25-32D. Four, it shall keep an index of all open areas publicly or privately owned, including open marshlands, swamps, and other wetlands for the purpose of obtaining information on the proper use of such areas, and may from time to time recommend to the planning commission or, if none, to the chief executive officer or the legislative body, plans and programs for the development and use of such areas. Five, and this is highlighted, it may make recommendations to zoning commissions, planning commissions, inland wetlands agencies, and other municipal agencies on proposed land use changes. Six, it may, with the approval of such legislative body, acquire land and easements in the name of the municipality and promulgate rules and regulations, including but not limited to the establishment of reasonable charges for the use of land and easements for any of its purposes set out in this section. Seven, it may supervise and manage municipally owned open space or park property upon delegation of such authority by the entity which has supervisory or management responsibilities for such space or property. Eight, it shall keep records of its meetings and activities and shall make an annual report to the municipality and the manner required of other agencies of the respective municipalities. Nine, the commission may receive gifts in the name of the municipality for any of its purposes and shall administer the same for such purposes, subject to the terms of the gift. This is further clarified in the Stonington subdivision regulations in chapter eight, 8.1, Open Space Dedication, 8.1.1. All subdivision applications shall provide for 15% of the entire parcel to be dedicated to open space. This requirement does not apply when a fee in lieu payment has been approved by the commission in conformance with section 8.2 below. 8.2, fee in lieu of open space. 8.2.1. The Planning and Zoning Commission may accept a fee or a combination of a fee and land from an applicant in lieu of the open space needs of the community in the factors listed in section 8.1.2. Such fee or combination of fee and land shall be based upon 10% of a fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to approval of the subdivision. Bullet points by Candace. In 2022, the open space fund was depleted by $326,025 for the purchase of the Rathman Farm land and Al Harvey Farm. The current open space fund balance as of today is only $178,347.05. I realize that the Conservation Commission is interested in the land because it abuts current land owned by Avalonia. However, according to the grading on GIS, the land appears less than worthwhile when compared to the opportunity to replenish the open space fund, which gives the town the ability to purchase quality land when it became, becomes available. In reading this, I have one, one further comment quickly. I know that in your review and rewrite of the zoning regulations, you're tasked with taking out a lot of your discretion, and I think that you should think about that with your, with your guard to this, where it says may, may waive the acquisition and win and receive a fee in lieu of. I think that's one of those discretionary things.
Very good point. Yeah, thank you, Ben.
Any other comments from the public? No other comments? Sam, your staff, staff input?
The commission is in receipt, my staff report. I prepared a staff report for the previous meeting, and I just included in the same report some new sections or revisions where there were some necessary, also some recommended approval stipulations that this is to later be approved. So I highlighted many of the things that we just discussed, which has to do with the applicant's new proposal for a conservation easement, so five acres that would have bought the Avalonia parcel. I've simplified the language that was provided in the 2018 easement, which is being used as a template or be, proposed to be used as a template by the applicant. So a list of prohibitions of the landowner, a list of rights of the town, and a list of rights of, of the landowner. I included zoning enforcement officers' comments, and I included approval stipulations. And I'm happy to go through those if there's any questions about any of them. And in approval stipulation number nine, I'd left a placeholder for the name of an appraiser. So that would be Gregory B. Herb, and I agree with Attorney Ladwig's recommendation that, you know, within an approval stipulation, there being a requirement that Mr. Herb shall have maintained his appraiser's certification. So without an extension being granted by the applicant, the commission should wrap up the public hearing. I, as Attorney Ladwig stated, I asked for qualifications of an appraiser. The reason being that Connecticut General Statutes, but also this town's subdivision regulations, they're very clear that an appraiser, when there is a fee in lieu of open space involved, must be chosen jointly by both the applicant and the town. So it's someone that both agree on. So I asked for a statement of qualifications from Mr. Herb. I think everyone has that. I'm happy to read off of it if anyone wants me to. But I think that should be part of a, you know, a later commission action. But, you know, I guess in approving the application, you would also be approving the appraiser. But at least having that as part of the hearing record, I think, is really important. So within 65 days of the close of the hearing, you'll have to make a decision regarding requested subdivision waivers, which requires a super majority. Decision on the proposal for open space or fee in lieu of open space. Decision on the proposal for open space or fee in lieu of open space. Decision on the CAM application and a decision concerning the subdivision application.
Four votes.
It doesn't really need to be four votes. The decision on the fee in lieu of open space, we know it's proposed. And I don't know this commission's past practice when it comes to both a CAM and subdivision application. But you could choose to do that in one or two votes if you'd.
Yeah, I like to do it separate. Any other questions for Sam? Staff?
So this application is not up to the 65 days, correct? So we could, if the commission wanted to, go back and have a discussion with the Conservation Committee and then come back next meeting?
This application's at 28 days of the 35 that you're allowed to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
So if you had any conversation with the Conservation Commission, it couldn't become part of, you know, a public hearing record. Or it couldn't become --
It could delay decision.
It couldn't become the basis for any decision that you make if it's being done outside of a public hearing.
Right. I was saying we could postpone our decision until the next meeting. But what I just heard you said is no. We're up against a timetable.
Unless the public hearing is continued, and you'd need a request by the applicant to do that.
Well, we already have two other public hearings on May 2nd.
Well, again, I mean, this could -- I mean, and I do think the commission could ask for an extension of the public hearing because we've done that before. I don't think it has to be the applicant. We need more information, so. Right. It's on. Mine's on. Okay. I'm just -- I mean, maybe we can close the public hearing. But I really feel that we should go back to the Conservation Committee and at least have an extended dialogue. And yes, they could be here. But I do think it's very rare that the Planning and Zoning Commission goes against the opinions of the Conservation Commission when talking about conservation land. So perhaps they thought that it wasn't necessary. I don't know.
Well, that's why I thought the easement satisfied that.
I was not here last week, or last meeting, so I have to leave that up to the commissioners.
Did you review the tape? Did you happen to watch the tape?
I have to leave it up to the other commissioners.
Yeah, because Fran Hoffman came in and wanted us to stipulate subdivision.
I'm not positive that he concurred with that. I wouldn't want to mislead anybody. And I think that, you know, we proposed it because I feel the same way you do. If you're not going to take the recommendation of the Conservation Commission, there should be something in place. We did discuss it. We had an opportunity to comment on it. And I didn't hear anything negative. That doesn't mean, you know, we've supported it. So in a lot of ways, I share your sentiments. In other ways, you know, I'm trying to take the input from our zoning enforcement officer, too, that the fund needs to be replenished. And we've sort of got the best of all worlds there with a conservation easement and getting fee in lieu of open space. So it's not like it was done under the cover of darkness, you know, it was done in public session with the Conservation Commission chair of the year. So he did have an opportunity to comment on it.
I think there's a simple head of.
Ben, would you like to use the microphone? What's your idea?
If I'm not mistaken, I'm sure Mr. Ladwig could weigh in. He would know more about it than I do. But I think that once the public hearing is closed, while the commission is deliberating, you can still seek input from your own staff and your own professionals. And I think the Conservation Commission or the chairman of the Conservation Commission would probably qualify as someone that you could get an opinion from during deliberations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering Associates. One of the things that I'm sure you recall that we discussed last month is actually the, you know, this area that we're putting in conservation. We stated for the record last time that it is substantially wetlands, huge boulders, really inaccessible to someone just going to take a walk in the woods. And I think the retort of the chair of the Conservation Commission said, well, it doesn't necessarily have to be land that you can walk on and you can have trails on. We look at it, you know, for habitat as well, for animals, and the value of it for habitat. By putting this conservation easement over this area that they're concerned about, that's exactly what we're doing. We are preserving habitat. These are not areas that anyone's ever going to walk in. Standing water, wetlands, large boulders, a lot of invasive vegetation. Great for the wildlife there, but certainly not for humans.
I'd like to weigh in on Mr. Tamsley's comment about the consultation with the Conservation Commission after the close of the public hearing. The generally accepted notion is that you can consult with town staff, meaning your town planner, the town attorney. It has not, in my experience, been to include other commission members, such as the Conservation Commission, the Inland and Wetlands Commission, or other town commissions. I think that would be clearly outside the, you know, the boundaries of the public hearing. I'm usually ready to grant any extension that the commission requests. In this case, I question whether any extension is going to produce any meaningful dialogue. The dialogue between this commission and the Conservation Commission was had at the last meeting. They were here, more than one member of that commission weighed in in front of this Planning and Zoning Commission at that meeting. The question that was left open after that meeting was whether or not the Conservation Commission had the right or the power, you know, to demand open space dedication and bind this commission, you know, to that determination. That determination has been made by town staff, and the answer is no. That determination as to whether or not you're going to demand open space dedication or a fee in lieu of open space dedication is up to this commission and this commission only. And the discussion between this commission and the Conservation Commission has been had. To go back and do it again would, to me, would be a meaningless exercise. You have all of the information, in my view, to make the decision tonight or close the decision and make the decision within the statutory period. You know, obviously, you don't have to make it tonight, but you can close the public hearing tonight as you need to do without an extension granted by the applicant, which strikes me as a meaningless exercise. That exercise hasn't been held. That discussion hasn't been had.
Thank you. Yeah, Fran Hoffman was here that night, and she also, I thought, concurred that the easement was a good thing to do. And I really stand firmly that they had their two weeks to come back for a rebuttal, just like anybody else. So I think their time is up, and I'd like to.
I would just like to say there have been many times when applicants have not shown up for rebuttal, and we have granted them extensions.
This is an applicant. It's a Conservation Commission with an erroneous proposal.
I think their position was quite clear. I don't see changing the Conservation Commission's position on this.
Right.
They want the land. We have, I'm reading Candy's summary, which I now gave away. We have the authority to either take their advice or not. And I think we should move on. I mean, dragging this out isn't going to make it better.
I also have a.
Thank you, because I think that your statement is very different from what I've heard. You've said it was very clear that they wanted the land, period.
It is.
So now we have the -- so it's not that they were okay with the easement. They wanted the land. They do not want the money, which means they were not open and in agreement that if we had an easement, it would go -- they would be -- they would accept that.
But the foundation they were building it on was a hardship.
A hardship, I mean, we often get involved, often, with subdivisions where if you were to set aside open space, it would be inaccessible and unusable because of surrounding properties and that sort of thing. It's not the case here. But that's, I guess, if you were in front of ZBA, that would qualify as a hardship. But it does not necessarily part of the decision process.
But I do, I also, that was loud. I also do think that their, my interpretation of it was their main concern was not so much open space, but the conservation of the land in general. So like, so that it wasn't, it couldn't be developed on. And he was here, and it was still open. So if he had been, if he didn't agree with that, I would have assumed that he would have gotten up to say something.
I also find it very telling Avalonia hasn't weighed in one way or the other, meaning Avalonia hasn't come with a letter saying, gee, we really would like those five acres. Please do what you can to provide it. And they haven't said boo, which I find telling.
I don't think we've ignored the Conservation Commission. I think we listened to the Conservation Commission, and we heard from the staff, and we've gone down sort of the middle of the road where we've said, Conservation Commission, lot of this land, in lieu of getting a fee, we're going to get a conservation easement. And it's inaccessible. It's documented on the total map. It's wet. The terrain is steep. It's not something that is going to contribute to recreation. So conservation easement will preserve it as a habitat. That seemed to be the emphasis of what the Conservation Commission wanted to do. So we're getting the money in lieu of open space, and we are doing what the Conservation Commission wanted us to do, and that's to obtain a conservation easement, I believe. It's not exactly what they asked us to do. But again, they made a recommendation, and I agree with. Their position, where they want the land, and we're not going to give them the land.
No, I'm sorry. The main emphasis of what they had asked us to do. So I guess I've satisfied myself that I could, in this case, accept a modified version of what they asked for.
I think, you know, don't forget, too, the applicant is giving away the five acres. They can't touch it. They're paying the 15%. It's not a win-win for the applicant. Five was the, I don't know. It's not a win-win for them.
I like it.
I think sometimes if no one's happy, it's a fair deal. And I can see no one being happy here. So that's what I think.
I've asked comments from the public. I can ask one more time. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So, Mr. Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second? Lynn, any further discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this application?
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted?
I think we need to move on the waivers first, correct?
Okay.
It was a sidewalk waiver or a landscape plan waiver requested.
Yep. Thank you, Chuck.
All right. I'll let you make that motion, Chuck. I don't have it in front of me.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman, of the requested waiver for sidewalks and waiver of the landscape plan. I believe the waiver of fee in lieu of open space has been withdrawn. So the two waivers, I'm moving.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any further discussion on those two?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move a decision on the proposal for open space, and we accept fee in lieu of open space, and we approve the appraiser that's been proposed by the applicant, subject to the extension of the appraiser's license.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Did you want to add the conservation easement?
No, that would be a good place to put it.
I'm sorry.
Conservation easement. You need to push your button back onto green, Chuck.
I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt your motion.
All loused up here on the button. I'm sorry. What about the conservation easement?
Include that in your.
Yes, yeah, include it.
And I think the name of whoever the appraiser was.
Gregory Urb.
Urb.
Greg B. Urb.
Greg B. Urb. All right. Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the CAM application for the subdivision.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion on the CAM application? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the subdivision as requested, subject to the 10 stipulations on pages 35 and 36 of the Planning and Zoning Commission report.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion on those 10 stipulations?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that for stipulation number nine, I'd left it blank on a report because we did not have a name yet. So with the addition of Gregory Urb, I'd recommend.
So noted for number nine on the stipulation. Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Uh, denied.
Excuse me? You deny. Put one denied. Thank you. And I fail to state who was seated this evening, I realize. So it would be Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Philbrick, Fred Dykman, Lynn Tonway, and Marge Salinger for this public hearing. Okay. You all set?
Yep.
Do you hear a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Fred. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.